Yallahumadet everyone, welcome to a special session of questions and answers. It is September 29th, 2020 at 8:06 Pacific time, and we are delighted that you are able to join this evening. We hope you will find this Q and A session both interesting and enlightening. The format of tonight's program will be as follows. For the first hour, Dr. Hashem will be answering questions that many of you have already submitted in the past via emails and chats. Thank you all for doing that. The next 20 to 30 minutes will be devoted to answering questions that you will be posting in the chat tonight. And the last 20 to 30 minutes will be used to answer live questions as you raise your hand. So without further ado, let's begin the program with the recitation of a beautiful Qasida, which I am sure many of you will recognize. Mashkan Kudri is originally from Afghanistan and currently resides in Seattle, Washington. Thank you so much Mashkan, that was beautifully recited, that is one of my favorite Qasidas. Thank you again for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Yallahumadet. Walalimadet. Okay, now on to our Q and A session. For those who have just joined, please remember to mute yourselves and keep your video off. It gives me great pleasure to introduce the star of the evening, Dr. Abdul Sultan Hashem. Dr. Rach, the floor is all yours.
Thank you very much Shai Rose and all the other co-hosts this evening. Thank you very much for all those participating this evening into this question and answer session. And very special thanks and gratitude to Mashkan for, and Shai Rose is right, such a beautiful Qasida, full of Noor, full of light, full of knowledge. And it is said, those who have the love of Maula Murtaza Ali Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam, as this beautiful, beautiful Qasida expresses it. In fact, this is the totality, the totality of Allah's grace and mercy is encompassed in Maula Ali Alaihissalam, as this beautiful Qasida expresses. And those who have the intellectual patience, if I may put it that way, and the maturity spiritually speaking, will totally understand why this beautiful, highly-charged Qasida is so meaningful all across the board. So thank you again for that, and that really sets the pace for this evening's question and answer session. As I begin, as I begin this session, there's one remark, one observation I'd like to make. And this observation is based on our beloved Imam's guidance. Many, many years back in the 1990s, and I think around the mid 1990s, when our Jamaats in Central Asia and surrounding area became visible to us, so to speak, in a sense that we began to discover our Jamaat today by Imam's grace and mercy, and vice versa. Some of you may remember how our beloved Imam explained to us that in certain parts of the world, we have Qasidas and these Ma'kabats, and we have these Asnavis. And in other parts of the world, like the subcontinent, we have Ginans. And it was our beloved Imam's wish, it was a Ferman for our beloved Imam, it was our beloved Imam's desire, that the tradition that comes from Central Asia, and our beloved Imam gave an example, he says that the traditions of Nasr al-Kosro and the tradition of Pir Sadad, both have to come together. And I hope we can understand this message, because what our beloved Imams, amongst other things, meant to say to the Jamaat is to say, you know, there may be a difference of language and culture and expression, but the essence of our faith is the same wherever you go, where there is Murids and where there are faithfuls of the Imam. Wherever there are Moomits, the expression, the essence of the faith is the same, there is no difference in this essence. This is why this beautiful Qasida is such an amazing reflection of the fundamental principle of who Maula Murtaza Ali is, and how that constitutes the foundation of our love, affection, submission, and prostration to the Noor of the Imam. Please say Salwa Talahma Sallallahu Alaihi Waheh. This is our faith, and we are so fortunate to have been guided by the Imam of the time, who has indicated and who has shown us how these traditions come together. Because our beloved Imam has said, this is his prerogative. This is what the Imam does, and this is how the Imam guides us. So this unity in the Jamaat, this unity in our practice, this unity of the essence and our understanding is absolutely fundamental in what we do in the 21st century. And I hope and pray that all of us, here and elsewhere, will have the wisdom to always remember that that is the wish and desire of the Imam of the time, that we should remain united in our practice. And our beloved Imam has said to us, there is pluralism in Islam, and there is pluralism in the Ismaili faith. But that pluralism is a strength, and we can see that today, we can see that today in our recitations, whether it is in Jawaat Kana or as we do it in this particular way tonight, and in other settings, for example, other Ginanic site like Ginan Guru and other site where they have Qasidas, they have Ginans, and they have other expressions of the faith. It is so amazing to see this unity in our Tariqa practices in terms of our devotional literature that expresses our love, devotion, submission, and deep understanding of the wisdom that our Dais and our peers through Qasidas and Ginans are giving us, have given us, and with Maula's grace and mercy, we are continuing to enjoy this amazing, amazing dimension of our faith. And I would say to everyone concerned, this dimension of our faith is so powerful, so amazing, that if we understood that and put that into practice, and I'm sure we're doing it, then we will continue to grow spiritually and continue to grow intellectually. Now, I wanted to take a few minutes this evening to speak about an area which is a bit technical, which is the area of critical thinking. And I'm just going to say just a few words, and down the road, in some shape or form, we'll continue exploring this area. Because I believe that we must, in all our endeavor, as our faith requires, as our Tariqa of intellect require of us, and as you well know, our beloved Imam tells us that our Tariqa, our faith, is a faith of the intellect. And one aspect of this intellectual dimension is critical thinking. Now, there are others like creative thinking, which I'm not touching this evening. But the notion of critical thinking is a very important one. And I fully understand, this may not necessarily be the right time at night for you to really get into the nitty-gritty of it, but I want to break the ice tonight, and what do I mean by critical thinking? So let me just give you a bit of a definition. And as I said, this will be work in progress, because it's a very dense, very concentrated notion to be really engaged into this idea of critical thinking. So, critical thinking is the intellectual discipline, if you like. It's the intellectual process, it's an intellectual process of actively and skillfully conceptualizing, applying, analyzing, synthesizing, and/or evaluating information gathered from, or if you like, information generated by observation or experience, or reflection, or reasoning, or communication, as a guide to belief and action. So I'm going to just stop there, but simply say to you that, and I will repeat this many times, not in today's presentation, but in other presentations, the point is to tell all the listeners today, and listeners who are not here today, but perhaps may listen independently, to basically emphasize the fact that in the world in which we live, in the world of information that we live today, in the world of information explosion that we live, is fundamentally important that this idea of critical thinking becomes a part of your nature. In other words, when you are observing, when you are experiencing, when you are reflecting, when you are reasoning, when you are communicating, all of these need to be done in a systematic way so that you can discover from these processes what is it that you think is most appropriate on the basis of the practice of our Tariqa. Now remember, I'm introducing critical thinking not so that you can apply this formula to subjects like philosophy and psychology and sociology, which is excellent to do. You can do that too, and other domains of thinking. But I am interested in the application of these elements in the understanding of our Tariqa. So that the understanding you generate out of this clear thinking process, or to begin with, out of this critical thinking process, you can become comfortable in exercising your intellect, in analysis, in reasoning, putting things together, and in a manner in which it will strengthen your understanding and strengthen your base so that you know what elements that can be certain and certainly part of our practice, and elements that are not part of our practice. And that is one of the objectives amongst others. And that is important, because there is so much information out there. A lot of it have no direct or indirect connection with our Tariqa. A lot of stuff have connection, because they come from our Tariqa. But perhaps the most important statement I can make tonight in this regard is the fact that whatever is to be known about our Tariqa and our practice, regardless of where the Murids are in the world, the first and absolutely fundamental rule is that those practices, those definition and understanding always, 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 always comes from the Imam of the time. And it is the Imam of the time who guides the Tariqa, who guides the Murid. And it is the Imam of the time who defines the Tariqa, by whatever means the Imam decides. And how our Tariqa is to be represented, in what facet, in which articulation, in which vision, it is always the Imam who guides those processes. And the job and the duty of the Murid of the Imam is to be on the same page as the Imam, and to support the vision, to support the articulation and the definition the Imam gives to our Tariqa. And to be in harmony, to be in consonance, to be in resonance with the Imam tells us. That is the task and job of the Murid. And that constitutes the basis of our Tariqa in the context, religiously speaking, the Tawil of the Imam, and from a standpoint of our material life, how to apply the teachings of the Imam, which is the Taliq of the Imam. So I would say to you something I said before. Please read the preamble of the Constitution, the Ismaili Constitution. This preamble of the Constitution is fundamental to understand, because it is an education in itself. Take time, analyze it, reason it, share it, communicate it, and learn the language to know how our Tariqa is represented in the context of this preamble. So I will stop here, and Shai Rose, back to you, and thank you for hosting tonight, Shai Rose.
No problem, thank you, and my pleasure. Dr. Rach, are you ready for your first question?
As ready as I can be.
Excellent. This evening, we've taken the questions, as I said, that were previously submitted, and categorized them, and we're going to be starting with the category Mind and Intellect. We have three questions there. Here's the first one. We know that the soul is within us. If so, is the divine intellect also within us? And a part B to that question, how does intuition play a role?
Yes, it's a very important question, because anything that relates to the notion of the intellect, we must take it seriously. As I've said a minute ago, it is what our beloved Imam tells us, that our faith is a faith of the intellect. So is that divine intellect within us? So let me bring to your memory an extract of a speech Maula Wapa gave on the inauguration of the Agakan University on the 11th of November 1985. So our beloved Imam said, and I quote, he said, "The divine intellect, Aklikul, both transcends and informs the human intellect." Now, this sentence is key in understanding. Do you see what the Imam says? The divine intellect, this is the Aklikul, and who is that? That is the Imam. In our Tariqa, the divine intellect, the Aklikul, the All-Knowing, that is the Imam himself. So this both transcends, means goes beyond, and informs the human intellect. So definitely, there is a connection between how the human intellect sees itself and the divine intellect, which transcends and informs the human intellect. So one may confidently say that most certainly, the human spirit, which is the facet of that intellect, and because it is the spirit, and the spirit is one of the spark that comes from this Aklikul, then definitely, this Aklikul or the divine intellect is also within the human being. And one of the reasons why we may be asking this question is because, generally speaking, there is a big gap, a veil, between that spirit part of our being and the material part of our being, which does not allow us to recognize this very identity. Now, having said that, let me connect that with the notion of intuition. What is intuition, first of all? Now, people define intuition in different ways. Gut feelings, or sometimes people say, I get good vibes, I got bad vibes. People talks about vibration. Or people say, you know what, I have a feeling that, so and so forth. So it is that kind of things. But you know that intellectual intuition is itself a divine gift to a human being. And what I mean by intellectual intuition, intuition is not something you can kind of define necessarily in terms of the concept of the mind itself, because intellectual intuition or pure intuition is a manifestation, it's an outburst that comes from the level of contemplation. If you were there in my lecture yesterday, I mentioned the physical eye of flesh, the eye of the mind or reason, and the eye of contemplation, meaning the spiritual aspect of our being. So intuition comes from that spiritual aspect of our being. In fact, it is pure knowledge that is discharged from the soul that appears into our mind and filtered into our brain, if you like, and makes itself known. In the past, we see many, many intellectuals defining intuition. And Louis Pasteur, the French microbiologist, he often used to say, intuition favors the informed mind. Meaning, if you expect your capacity of intuition to help you, to activate, so that you can gain the right output, then it has first be informed about the matter, the knowledge part of that aspect that you are seeking information from. And we have many examples in science, and this whole area of study from a psychological point of view is known as synchronicity, whereby, at some point in time during this search, that a thinker conducts, it may be science, it may be philosophy, it may be other domains of knowledge, suddenly, there is an outburst of that answer in an image, in a word, in a symbolic form, that manifests itself as the truth of that search. And in order to sharpen that intuition, a person needs to devote themselves towards the aim of the purification of the mind. So what comes out from the level of the spirit basically penetrates the mind. Otherwise, if the mind is so impure, the knowledge that comes from that source of intuition will not penetrate. That's why there is that struggle. So intellectual intuition is a very important faculty within the human being, provided the intellect is not covered with negative passions, which I've spoken one or two lectures back.
Thank you, that was wonderful. I have another one that's similar and related. How do you connect the intellect with submission to the will of God?
How do we connect the intellect to submission to the will of God? That's a very nice question. The point is this. The notion of submission in Islam, which is the very name of Islam, the very definition of Islam, meaning he who submits himself, the will of God, to the will of the divine, gains peace. Now, how is the intellect connected? The question is, it's not even a question of connection. The very act of submission, it's actually the submission of the intellect itself. So it's not that you say, I am different than my intellect, how do I submit my intellect? The only reason you may say that is because there is this connection between your thinking process, which is part of your mind, and the actual intellect, which is a higher-level process of intelligence. So the notion of submission is actually this submission of you, yourself, which constitutes the intellect, to the divine will. This is the reason why, in the Quran, and I think I've explained that in some earlier lectures, those who are unable to exercise the ability of expressing their faith, faith meaning in terms of trust and belief, the Quran says their intellect is malfunctioning. Isn't that amazing? We are not blaming the devil here, we are not blaming other people to say, oh, well, you know what, these are the people responsible, because I'm the victim of the, you know, misnorm. No, if faith cannot be what it is, as Islam said that it should be, then it is a malfunction of your intellect. But the very definition of this, it means that the submission part is the intellect. So it's not even a matter of connection.
Right. Moving on to another category of dreams, karma, and sleep. Please explain, at what stage did we create our karma when there is no reincarnation, when we came into this world?
So now, to answer this question in some logical way, and also to at least connect together some of the pieces, what is important to understand is, first of all, the individual must ask themselves this question, especially the one who has posed this question, and ask themselves the question, "What am I doing in this world? What was the reason for my soul to take birth into this world?" You remember, our beloved Imam explained to us in one place, and he said, "The soul is created and given physical form." So now, you are into the physical form of your soul. Your physical body is the manifestation of your spiritual expression. This is you physically, and your Atma, your Dhu, your spirit, is the real you, but spiritually. So why did that soul take birth into this world? Why? And this is the question that mankind has been asking themselves for eons, since the beginning of time. And the answers that have been given to the human being is, "Well, if you want to know that, if you want to know yourself, and if you succeed in knowing yourself, then you will also know who God is and who your creator is." Like what I said yesterday, "He who knows himself knows God," what Hazrat Ali said. Do you know, if you, if you, if you know Greek philosophy, and if you, those of you who know it, you will remember in the, in the teachings of Plato, in his academy, there, there was a writing in the arch that says, "Know thyself." Know thyself. So you can begin here to begin with. I'm coming to some quick explanation, but I say, this inquiry has to begin within yourself. Do I know myself? And then, someone like Prophet Socrates. Socrates says, "Unexamined life is not worth living." I'm giving you these pointers because I'm trying to make the point to you that if you want to know why you are here, then you have to begin with that inquiry. And remember, this inquiry that comes throughout the ages, this is also what Imam Sultan Muhammad Shalallahu Alaihi Wasallam, throughout his imamat, has said to the Jamaat, that, "Ask yourself, where have you come from? What are you doing here on earth? What will be the span of your life? Where will you go when you leave this earth? And if you came from somewhere, what is the purpose, the reason why you actually came here?" This is a part of our Tariqah, where the believer is supposed to take some time from their busy schedule and do introspection. And you may remember, not long ago, we went through this very, very brief exercise, whereby I proposed this act and said, "Ask yourself, am I, am I the body? No. Am I my thoughts? No. Am I my emotions? No. Am I my feelings? No." I am the one who experiences my body, but who is this I? It's not the ego, because we just said, the mind could change left, right, and center, as everyone knows. So I'm not my body, I'm not my feeling, I'm not my emotions, I'm not even my mind, then who am I? I, with a capital I. I am that consciousness, I am that spirit inside me that is witnessing and experiencing all those facades and all those masks that are in front of the spirit. You could begin your inquiry there. So now, the question that was asked in relation to this was, "At what stage did we create our karma when there is no reincarnation, when we came into this world?" Well, let's address the question point blank. First of all, look at the word reincarnation. Are you not incarnated right now? Our beloved Imam said, "The soul is created and given physical form." The fact you are into this physical form, it's called an incarnation. What else would you call it? This is the incarnation of the soul right now, as you are living into this material realm, material plane. And in order to exist and function and be part of the material realm, you need a material vehicle, and this material vehicle is your physical body. Otherwise, how would you move and touch and sense and do all the material things? You couldn't. If you were, if you were visiting here in a form of your spirit, you would have no material experience, because you need a material vehicle like this body to experience in it. That's why we have it. So the first thing to put into perspective, that you are in your incarnated form. And the other thing to understand, this is not the first time you have been incarnated into this plane of existence. You have been here before. Whether you accept it or not, however you look at it, I wish you could have a dialogue about it. And I'm sure I will be tackling the subject, the actual subject of reincarnation, hopefully, in its holistic way, for us to understand and bring you the evidence that we have with research today into this phenomena, including the research and the evidence that our Imams have given to us in our teachings. So for the moment, keep that suspended, but in answering the question, whenever there is reincarnation, the first thing you have to remember immediately with that word, incarnation or reincarnation, is the word karma. There cannot be reincarnation or incarnation without a karma. And the fact that we as human beings are in the human form, or the soul is in the human form, you have not always been into the human form. And I always point out what Imam Sultan Muhammad Shalallahu Alaihi Wasallam points out to Rumi. And there are other farman's of the Imam also, which I will try to explain through the farman's, what the Imam is saying to us about this knowledge. But look at what Rumi says. And you know what Rumi says. So let me just take a second. He said, "I was a stone. And then I moved on to be a plant. From a plant, I became a worm. And being a worm, I went into the animal kingdom. And from the animal kingdom, I qualified to become a human being, in a human form. And then I went further." Now, I know there are the class of spiritual thinkers who have their own version of this and try to basically say that, "No, no, 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 no. This is what Rumi meant, was something spiritual." Well, you know what? You can be all the spirit that you want, but these are physical forms too. Is stone not something physical? Is plant not something physical? Is a worm not something physical? Is animal not something physical? Is the human form something not physical? So you know what? You are entitled to your so-called spiritual interpretation, but you cannot deny the reality of the physical existence. And we will use the verses of the Quran when the time comes to show, to show this reality. And how this has been explained in our Tariqah. Let me just say it here, that Allah created eight million four hundred thousand forms. We are not speaking about Darwinian evolution. In other words, we are not speaking about intra-species. We are not saying a stone became a plant. We are not saying a plant became a worm. We are not saying a worm became an animal. No, 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 no. This, this type of understanding is called intra-species. There is no scientific basis to it, and frankly, there is no such evolution of seeing those kind of transformation. Because we can look at the, the fundamentals of genetics and try to understand even from the science of genetics, how many mutation you would really need to make this kind of intra-intra-species leap. That's not what I'm referring to. But that is an argument I'm going to bring in to explain other things down the future. But what, right now, what I'm saying is that even if you use the notion of evolution, as Darwin proclaimed it, then within that species, there is interspecies, interspecies modifications based on natural selection and survival of the fittest. Within that species, there are changes. Needless to say, look at the variety of dogs, the variety of horses, the variety of birds, but they are all birds. They are all dogs, and they are all horses, and so on. So the point I'm trying to make first, Allah created eight million four hundred thousand bodies, if you like. And each of these bodies are of their own making. Even though we may trace, we may trace evolution from the standpoint of something from the lower to the higher. But the idea is, the soul went into each one of these bodies. So let's say, when the soul was inside the stone, it came out when the time came and went into the plant and stayed there for whatever time, and we know the time. But I don't want to make that the subject of this question. Then it came out of the plant and went into the animal kingdom. And then from the animal kingdom, we have the higher kingdom. And eventually, when that soul was spiritually significantly evolved, it eventually came into the human form. And why the human form is significant? Because it is only true and in the human form can the soul gain salvation. In other words, as the Quran says, "Inna lillahi wa inna elihi rajiun, He from whom we have come, to whom we will return." That's why the human form is so important. And that's why we at all, in our teachings, in our Tariqah, do not waste your human form. If you do not recognize how valuable this human form is, then in the future, if you haven't made it, you will need another form. And if you don't have that form, you go back. I'm not saying that. I will give you the evidence, and you will be shocked when you see this evidence. Even those hard-nosed believers who think, "Oh, well, Islam does not believe in reincarnation." That's total nonsense. The first question to ask, remember I said to you, "Critical thinking"? I'm saying to you, ask those hard-nosed people, which Islam are you referring to? The Islam of the ISIS, the Taliban, the Islam of those who veil women into their own rooms, and the Islam of those who refuse human rights to other people? Or are you referring to the Sufi Islam? Which Islam are you referring to? And it is so sad to think that sometime people mention that without any sense of thinking and understanding. Look, let me be very clear. Neither I nor our Tariqah in any way whatsoever has any qualms about other people's interpretation or meaning to this. They can have their meaning. But for anyone to, to say that this is not an Islamic concept, that is wrong. Because this is also in Islam, and I shall bring the evidence during my lecture. So I want to make that clear, because it's so quick for people to jump into this notion the moment we say reincarnation or the word karma, because remember, they are words. They jump into this conclusion, "Oh, well, this is Hinduism, or this is Buddhism, or this is" whatever other ism they're trying to associate. Well, that is a very, very narrow view of a universal natural phenomena that exists and has existed since the beginning of creation. So, sorry to take a little time on this, but it's important. So now, the idea that in this notion about the karma, because this is the crux of the question. There are essentially four types of karma, but one is included into the other. So these three types, if you like. First of all, is called, the first type is called Sanchit karma. The second one is called Prarabd karma. And the third one is called Kriyaman karma. So what is the difference? Because the question says, "We are incarnated, and from the beginning, when we came, there was no karma." So how did we become incarnated? So this is a confusion in the mind of the individual, because remember, souls that came out of the ocean of souls, the Alme Arwa, they created this karma by being unresponsive to the divine. And it's rather a long episode to describe, but simply speaking, these souls basically did not recognize the divine in the spiritual form, in the very form that they were. In fact, they were the kind of spirits or soul that were neither here nor there, so to speak. And as a result of that, they were asked to restart the understanding of who they are. And from the context of our Tariqah, this is very important. The reason you are here is because you did not complete your task to achieve the finality of salvation. Why else would you be here? Are you here to play football and to play hockey? Well, that too, but that's not your objective. The idea of being in this world is to make sure you get to the next, and you get to the next fast. And you get to the next in such a manner that you don't come back here again. The soul doesn't want to come back here again. But depending on what kind of action that you are promoting to yourself, meaning what kind of karma. So what is Sanchit karma, the first type? Sanchit karma means your basket of karma, I'm giving an analogy here to be very quick. You have a basket full of all these karmas that you have accumulated from the beginning. And when I say beginning, and I know this is a question bugging people and the individual, what is that beginning? That beginning, that beginning is, you did not even make it in the previous cycle of creation. So all those souls that were in that previous cycle was brought into this new cycle. But why were you brought into this new cycle? Because you had unfulfilled karmas of that previous cycle. And all those karmas of the previous cycle, they are into your basket of karma that you have been carrying with you throughout your lifetimes. And what is happening? In each lifetime, you have taken a bunch of those karmas that makes it what your destiny is into that particular lifetime. For example, today's lifetime that you have, your life on earth today, what defines that? Well, look into your basket of karma. It was this bunch of karma you took out of that basket before you were physically born and made that the basis of your life in this particular existence. So it is those karma that matured from that basket that you took out. And now those karmas are guiding your destiny into this life. And because those karma came from that basket, called Sanchit karma, the portion of those karma that the portion of those karma that matured, that was ripe for you to bring into this life, that makes who you are, that guides your destiny and everything else, too lengthy to explain right now, those karmas are called Prarabd Karma. Prarabd. And Prarabd Karma basically is your predestination. So you know, people ask the question and they say, how can I be predestined to do this and this and know this and this suffering and this? Well, in the first instance, this is what is happening. And then, I'll come back to that in a second. And then there is the third level of the third part is Kriyaman Karma. Kriyaman Karma are those karma that you do right now through your thinking, your speech and your action. Now those actions that we call karma, the word karma just means your action. Doesn't mean anything Hinduistic or Buddhist. It means your action, amal. And these actions, the Holy Quran is full of it. So these actions that you perform right now, some of them will mature a month from now or six months from now. Others mature immediately. For example, if you decide to put your hand on a hot stove, you get burnt, that's the immediate reaction. So some mature right away. And there are other karmas that will not mature in this lifetime, which will be unfortunate. They will go back into your basket of this Sanchit Karma. And then you create those karmas, you haven't worked them out, so to speak. Then you have to come back and fulfill them. Because those karmas, they mature, but they can only be activated in the plane they were created, which is right here. Now, let me wrap this thing up very quickly because as I said, these are lengthy subjects. But, but thank you for asking the question. So what happens? The human being is being given an intellect, a reason, an akhlam from which to think and understand. And understand that true divine, true divine will, through the acceptance of the divine will in one's life. So let me rephrase this. Here I am, these are my karmas. But there is also the divine will. There is also divine grace, divine mercy, divine acceptance. So what does Islam says? If you submit yourself to the divine will, you will gain peace. Meaning, if you allow, if you allow that divine will to come into your life, intellectually you understand that and there is no resistance. And you follow that divine will. What do I mean by that? I mean, in the case of our Tariqah in Islam, that divine will is the holy guidance of Maulabapa into our life. And what is the significance of that guidance? When we follow the guidance of Maulabapa, remember, what is the guidance? His new resinticated to you where you should turn to obtain spiritual and worldly satisfaction. Yes, you can't deny that. So now, instead of saying, I am going to follow my own akhlam. I am going to follow my own thoughts. I am going to do this, I am going to do that. You are saying to yourself, no. I know where I am by virtue of who I am. But now I'm going to say, Maula, let your will, let your wish, let your desire as my, my Imam, let you penetrate my being. And in doing so, what happens? All our bad karma, bit by bit by bit by bit dissolve. Are you understanding this? This is the part of Siratul Mustaqim. When a human being decides and made a decision, this is important. I will be in the Siratul Mustaqim, no matter what. I will not be distracted. I know I may have bad habits, but you know what? I'm going to make an effort through my akhlam. And I will submit myself to the will of the Imam. And I will be Ferman Bardari. Meaning, I will follow the Ferman of the Imam. And guess what? Guess what? Bit by bit, all these negative karmas in our Sanchit Karma basket and the one we have brought with us starts dissolving, start disappearing. Why? Because the idea of being in Siratul Mustaqim is salvation of the soul. Where does it say that? Read Salokomoto of Holy Pirsam, Shalallahu Aleihi Wasallam. Just one sentence for now. Ferman mane feratere. This is the holy teachings of our peer. That if you follow the Ferman's of the Imam, all those bad karmas will basically disappear and it will break open the wheel of this birth and rebirth and you will be salvaged. But in following the Ferman, while you are alive, your life becomes better and better and better and better because you are in the part of Siratul Mustaqim. So, the notion of karma is true. The notion of reincarnation is true. The solution to get rid of both is follow Siratul Mustaqim, follow what Maulabapa says and do not for one breath stay away from him. Then you will succeed.
Thank you, Dr. H. It is such a fascinating topic, reincarnation and karma. So thank you for sharing your perspective on that. There are probably two things that we as human beings always know are going to be of certainty. And that is life and death. So on the topic of death, I wanted to ask you some questions that we have been posed. How does the soul of the Rouhani benefit from the Salwaat we say on their behalf?
So, in some sense, I had addressed this question, I think, way back then. I forget, when I brought to explain the mystical aspect of Salwaat. So number one, remember, the Salwaat is a universal prayer. It goes at all levels of creation. From the smallest unicellular protoplasm, even to all these atoms we consider unconscious, all the way to the level of human being and to the level of the divine and the angels. Right? Such is the power, such is the power of Salwaat. So put that into perspective. Secondly, our beloved Imams have guided us and they've said to us, particularly Imam Sultan Mamadshah, Shalallahu Aleihi Wasallam. Maulabapa said to us, Salwaat has five benefits. And we were instructed as part of our practice that when an individual soul, an individual Murid passes away, to say plenty of Salwaat behind this individual. Why? Because there are five benefits to Salwaat. Benefit number one, your faith, your strength of faith will increase day by day. Benefit number two, your enemies will run away from you. Benefit number three, your sins will be forgiven. Here comes the thing. Benefit number four, you will be admitted to paradise. And benefit number five, you will be beneficiary and blessed with the holy bidar of the Imam. Please say Salwaat, Allahumma Salihallah, Muhammadin Wa Alei Muhammad. So Maulabapa is giving us these five benefits for every Salwaat that we recite. So therefore, when a soul leaves this world, what is it that the soul wants from you? A dinner party? A hamburger? A new car? A holiday in an exotic place? You know what the soul says? Keep it, keep it. Those are totally useless for where I am. The soul only needs spiritual food because it is spirit. And that spiritual food comes through prayers after the departed soul. You know, I often like to say, and this is just my perspective. People speak about the word debt. Do you know that there is no debt? No one actually dies. That individual leaves this world and goes to another plane of existence. And basically says, when that individual gets to that plane, you know what they say? They go like that in their spiritual form and they say, good riddance. They don't want anything to do with this plane of existence. They say, good riddance. So the only thing they ask from those remaining behind. And of course, when that Murid is part of our Jamat, our beloved Imam has guided us and say, all of you get together and pray for that soul. And we do that in the way that you know, we pray, we do in Kani, we do individually and so on. And all those spiritual food helps in that soul who has departed to that new plane of existence, that is its spiritual food. And those prayers helps in detachment, helps in progress, helps in elevation, helps in the forgiveness of sins. You heard the five benefits of the Salwaat. So that is the benefit of the Salwaat. Did I answer the question properly?
Yes, yes. Along the same kind of thread, there was a question that said, when you think of a Rouhani member of your family in Jamat Kana, does that mean that the spirit of that Rouhani member is now present in Jamat Kana with you?
A very good question. The soul will always be where there is benefit for itself. And particularly, and I know this is a very mystical thing, so I'm not going to be really focusing on that, but simply saying to you, there may be physically twenty-five or thirty people in Jamat Kana. But I'd like to tell you, the Jamat Kana is actually flooded, inundated with souls. Just to put it simply. And when a family and an individual comes to benefit that soul through prayer, through offerings and whatever we do in Kani, it's almost like, if I can give you an example, it's not a perfect analogy, but hopefully it will convey some understanding. If you, if you organize a birthday party for a family member, now what is your expectation? Your expectation is that family member better show up. What would be the purpose of inviting all the guests when the key guest, which is the member of your family, who the party is organized for, is not there? It's understood. Exactly in the same way, remember, remember, this is a fundamental belief in our Tariqah. Who is present in Jamat Kana? Maulabapa himself is present in Jamat Kana. There's no questions about it. This is not a thought that you can negotiate or a thought that you can say, easy or easy not. This is not an idea that you can even say to yourself, well, I don't know, nobody's ever said to me. Let me tell you in most emphatic terms. Because I can prove that to you from the ayats of the Quran and from the teachings of our beloved Imams, of the Holy Prophet and those of our Da'is also. Maulabapa is a hundred percent present in his house. Jamat Kana is his house and he is present. Whether we are there or not, he is present. He is present twenty-four seven in his, in his house, in the Jamat Kana. So understand that. Knowing that, understanding this, having the conviction of this, leads us immediately to have the conviction that Jamat Kana is paradise on earth. Are you following me? Are you with me? Jamat Kana is actually swarg, paradise on earth. But are you able to see this with these eyes? Maybe, maybe not for those who understand. Having said that, if that is paradise on earth and there is a party organized for a soul and those souls are where? I'm giving you the logic behind. The soul of the Murid is always with Maulabapa. And if that soul is about to receive some spiritual benefit for its spirit, it will be present wherever that soul benefit is given. And also remember, it may well be that that soul is in a different dimension which Maula has placed. In that case, Maulabapa himself has said that he immediately, immediately takes those benefits in Kani and given in Jamat Kana. And immediately, he makes, he makes sure this benefit is credited to the soul or the spirit of that individual. This is our belief, this is the way in which we relate to it.
Thank you, Dr. Hashim. Taking the conversation to a different category altogether, it's an ethical dilemma that some have wondered about. And what the question is, what does our Tariqah say about the use of morphine and other narcotics for chronic pain at the end of life? By using these substances, are we reducing our life or prolonging our life? And is that okay?
So the first thing to know, life and death is in the hands of the divine. Okay? That is a categoric thing. I mean, it's a general, it's a general rule, it's a principle, it's a fact of creation. Life and death is in the hands of the divine. Now, there are certain details to understand. Either way, however you look at it. First of all, for an individual who is under this medical condition whereby morphines or certain narcotics are given to manage the pain or to manage the disease or to manage the physical condition of that individual, I hope the question refers to the normality of things. Meaning that narcotics are not taken for consumption in terms of addiction, this and that. No, but this is a hospital and medical management. So if this individual is requiring this type of medication or this kind of chemical intervention to allow the body to be comfortable and so on and so forth, then it's important to understand there is the physical part of the individual and there is the spiritual part of the individual. Meaning the real individual is the soul occupying that body, as I've been explaining to you. So, what is the view of our Tariqah number one? The view of our Tariqah is quite straightforward. If you have a physical, medical issue, then medical science needs to treat that. And medical science, Insha Allah, will do its best to treat you physically. And what is the purpose of that treatment? Obviously, is to prolong life, not to cut out life, is to prolong life. That is a given, that's why the intervention is there. And if the intervention is there in terms of prolonging life, then you hope that the medical science, who we, Insha Allah, hope understands the situation of that individual, will do just that. So, that is a positive thing. And why is it positive thing? Because as long as life exists physically, there is the constant and available opportunity for the person who is in that circumstance of life to continue exercising the ability of his intelligence, will, and spirit to pray, to do his Ibadah, and so on. Even though he may be, or she may be bedridden, she may be into those kind of condition. But this spiritual activity continues and is highly fruitful, highly, highly fruitful. As long as human life can continue, there is always hope that that time, and I'm referring to that specific time, is a constructive, positive time for the individual to continue to plant seeds of the spirit and eventually get that fruit in the hereafter. So, there is no stigma attached to receive this kind of treatment, which is very important. And I'm sure it is the will of the individual too, to say, "You know, I'm going through this because my life has been prolonged, although there are challenges." There is another aspect to it. Because the question related to shorting or prolonging of life. Let's say, for example, just hypothetically, a person has been drinking all their lives. You know very well what happens to the physical body by that excess of alcohol in the body. You know what happens when that kind of alcohol is, you know, drinking basically, dust to your brain. You know what happens to the neurons in your brain? The myelin sheet that covers the axon begins to melt. And all kinds of, all kinds of physical negative reaction happens in your organs. Now, what happens? Islam is very clear. Don't consume alcohol. Stay away from that. Islam is very clear. Intoxicating elements, that could be alcohol, that could be drugs, that could be narcotics, that could be all kinds of substances that create substance abuse in any shape or form, stay away from it. Why? Because those substances will shorten your life. Now, listen to this. It is not the divine that created that shortness of life. If you were given eighty years to live, and you decided out of your own accord, "I will drink, I will smoke, I will take substance abuse," and by doing that, what have you done? The body that is given to you in trust, remember the physical body, as our beloved Imam has explained to us, it is the place where the divine flame exists. Understand this. The Imam said to us, "The body, the body is the temple of God" where the divine flame exists. So, what are you doing? What are you doing but polluting and getting your body to rot? Because that's what happens. Your body is rotting. And if your body is rotting, sorry to be so graphic about it, but you know, this is the reality. What's happening to the time that you were given? You were given eighty years, ninety years to live. Now, you decided to rot your body out of some misguided in your mind, that you think all those things are great to you, and they benefit you. Now, you've shortened your life from eighty to ninety to sixty to sixty-two. And you die. Do you think this is a joke? When God gives you a life of ninety years in this life, and you decide to chop it off due to your bad karma, your bad actions, now it's chopped off. What happens to that twenty or thirty years that were part of your life here? You chopped it off and you died. Very, very, very serious consequences. Have you thought about it? Let me perhaps, if I may respectfully present to you a way to look at it. When you decide to chop your life, that is divinely given to you, this is another message you are giving to the divine, you are giving to God. You are saying to God, "You know what? I don't care about the ninety years you gave me. Well, I'm dying at sixty." It means you are telling God, "I don't care about this human life. It's okay, let my body rot." Because remember what I said to you in the scheme of evolution? It is the most difficult thing, the most difficult thing in the scheme of natural evolution to acquire a human body. Do you know how many souls are waiting out there to get a human body so they can get salvation? But you decided out of your own intelligence to chop off that amount of years that has been divinely gifted to you, and you are telling God, "I'm not interested in your gift." So, you know what? Let this body rot, and if I die, well, I die, right? And then when your soul will be freed, and you're facing the consequence, guess what are you going to say? You know what the Quran says? You are going to tell, you are going to tell God, "Lord, forgive me, forgive me, forgive me, I promise, now I will do what you have asked me to do. Now send me back." You know this word? Send me back. It's in the Quran. And God is going to tell you, "You are nothing but a liar and a deceiver. Every time I sent you back, you come back with the same excuse." I'm not saying that to you. This is in the Quran. So, I'm saying to you now, then where will you end up? Now, you did not complete your task. You chopped off twenty years of your life. And now you are in front of the divine, who says, "Go, you're nothing but a liar and a deceiver." But go where? You did not appreciate the human body. You did not appreciate the guidance given to you when you were on earth. You did not like and cherish your human form. Your behavior was like an animal. Your instinct was like an animal. Your nafs, your whole focus was on your nafs amara, because that is what alcohol and all these negative things do. So, what is the conclusion? The conclusion is, well, maybe you don't need a human body, go back into an animal body. Because that was your whole focus of existence. Do you think this is a joke? Or do you think this is just a guesswork? No. The laws of nature are perfect. And whatever you sow, so shall you reap. Je voudrais m'avouer, tu vas l'en voir. Whatever you plant, you will receive that. This is a universal law in all religions and in all spiritualities, including ours. So, I'm sorry, let me not lose the sense of the question. But that is the part that can shorten our life. So, I'll stop here because I won't go much further at this stage.
Perfect. Thank you very much. It is a topic that I think can have a lot of discussion. But there was another ethical dilemma question that was posed, and that is, "Could you please clarify where we, I'm assuming Tariqah, we stand on medically assisted dying, euthanasia, and organ donation?"
Okay. Well, about medically assisted dying, okay, in some way, just now, in what I've just mentioned, is kind of understood. We, in our Tariqah, we are guided by our Imam in terms of how we lead our life, remember? And I think we all understand that. Medically assisted dying is a form of suicide. And suicide, it's against Islam. And it is, it is of course of consideration to acknowledge that sometime, physical life was so unbearable, and hence, the recognition that medically assisted suicide, or people say the word dying carefully, is not really something that is in Islam, or for that matter, in our Tariqah. And I've explained it a moment ago, to say, "The longer you can live, even in that painful condition, it is spiritually beneficial." How? How? People might think, "Oh, no, 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 I can't stand that suffering. I can't see my aunt, or my mother, or my father suffer like that, so let's kill them." I'm sorry to use that word. But it is the fact. And you know, suicide, doesn't matter how you define it, doesn't matter how you label it, doesn't matter how you sugarcoat it, it is suicide. Plain and simple. There is no other way to say it. So, what happens? Our beloved Imams have explained to us about life. And they say to us that, "Be mindful of your old age. Be mindful of your life." In what way? Be mindful in such a way to know and to acknowledge. Our beloved Imam says, first and foremost, "Don't complain." Because the Imam said to us, Mollabapa, he said to us, "The discomfort that you are getting at old age, the suffering that you go through." Remember, Mollabapa knows very well what kind of suffering we go through. But the suffering that we go through is a way that the body, that pain that has been suffered through the body, is bearing the brunt of the soul. Meaning, this condition that exists in a human being, at whatever time of their lives this thing happens, you know, it can happen to younger people too, that is purifying the soul. So that there may not be any retribution in the hereafter. So, the question is, "Do you want to pay the price here or there?" If I can put it to you bluntly. There is no other way. Do you want to pay the price here or there? So, our faith says, "Pay it here." Because that would be much easier, and that will be a lot more pleasant. Because when the soul will leave this mortal body, it will be free of that grief, of that pain, of that sorrow, and all of that. So, it is not a good thing to bring into your life, in whichever way you look at it, the notion of suicide. Bear the brunt, follow the Farman, be strong, follow the faith, and let your life end naturally, whatever that definition may be. I'll leave it at that.
Dr. H, there is a question in the chat to just asking for clarification, that are you suggesting that taking one, a person off of life support is deemed as killing?
Not necessarily. Remember, if my understanding is correct, okay? Life support is given to individuals precisely for extending life. That is the obvious conclusion to it. But who will guide the families or the individual in deciding whether this is now the line to be drawn whereby you need to be disconnected from the continued existence of life? That is a kind of ethical, medical, philosophical, spiritual type of a question. So, let us say, let us say, if based on medical advice, and I mean medical in its right sense of the term, based on medical advice, the families are given this perspective to say, "Well, you know what? All the organs are failed, for example. Even brain activity is questionable." And so on and so forth. Whereby, the, to the best of the ability of medical science today, that medicine recommends that it is not useful anymore to have all these machine plugs of this individual. Because it's simply not prolonging life. This is a key thing. Then families have a decision to make with the doctors or the hospital, whether that is an act to be done. And in that case, it may well be permissible that the family, based on medical advice, receives that and get that done.
Thank you, Dr. H, for clarifying that. I just want to remind the audience that the chat is now open. If you have any questions, please feel free to post them, post them in there. We are going to take the next question that was also related to this ethical dilemma question, and that was about organ donation. How do we stand on that point?
In our Tariqah, it's very clear. You are authorized to give your organs if you so wish. And it is considered a good deed, a good action. Because in our Tariqah, once the soul departs the body, this body will decompose in the grave. But if this body is still useful to science, it is useful to prolong the life of another human being, then it is an individual decision that one has to make to decide. It may be a family decision to make and to decide whether you want to donate your kidney or your heart, if it is, if medical science considers it healthy enough to save the life of another human being. There is no stigma or anything attached to it. Now, I know there are views from other traditions, but frankly, they do not contradict what we do because our Tariqah is guided by our own understanding of what it is.
There is one more along the same thread. Can morphine lessen the pain of the soul at the time of death the way it lessens the body pain?
Morphine is a physical chemical. It intended for the physical body. It has no connection with pain in the soul. The soul does never feel pain in that sense of the term. The only pain the soul can feel, if I may put it this way, is if we have baskets full of bad deeds, and there is retribution in the hereafter. That's a different thing. But no, there's no connection to either.
Thank you. Another question from the audience, "Why do bad things happen to good people? Why do the innocent suffer?"
That's a very popular question. In fact, there is a book to that regard written by a Jewish rabbi, "Why Bad Things Happen to Good People." And it's a, it's a great title because many people fall into that category to say, "Well, I'm so good, you know, but why is this bad things happening to me?" Look, the simple thing is this. Could it be a divine test on you that you consider bad? Could it be your karma that have ripened, that now you are paying the price of it? Could it be retribution from someone else in terms of what's happening to you? All of these factors could come into play. Now, if I was delivering a full, and I mean a full lecture on the theory of karma, I may be able to show you in a map where this thing kind of emerges from. But in order to answer you to a question... But in order to answer you to a question very clearly, the idea is this, number one, based on the teachings in our faith, in our tarika, do not consider them bad. Number one. Number two, accept it, accept the fact that this is happening. And don't complain about it, accept it first. And by accepting, thank Moulah, thank the divine, that whatever this is happening has a reason, whether you know the reason or you don't know the reason, but there is always a reason. Nothing ever, ever, ever happens without a reason, because the whole notion of something good or bad is based on the laws of action and reaction. Okay? So, this is not completely correct, to say that bad things happen to good people. Whatever good you have done, are doing and will do, you will reap that good in a multiple way. Whatever bad you did, that retribution, meaning that punishment is going to be there, unless you are able to eradicate it, delete it, or efface it. And let me tell you one thing, you may be able to seek forgiveness for any bad thing that you did from the divine, and he may forgive you. But if you have done any bad things to any other individual, no, there is no forgiveness for that, unless that individual forgives you first, and then the divine will forgive you for what you have done, because you have transgressed. So, the good and bad has to do with your action, your verbal action, your mental action, and your physical action. That's why we are told in our faith, in our tarika, you know, when Moulabapa says, our faith is a faith of the intellect. Have you understood how that applies in terms of our daily life? Moulabapa says, the use of the intellect is the proper behavior in society. Moulabapa says to us, in that context, as explained in, uh, by other Imams, and certainly in our Ginnans, what does it say? At every moment, exercise your reason. Don't let your reason, even momentarily, go to sleep, because the devil is just waiting for you to be into that frame of laziness, grab your thoughts of that moment, and mislead you. You might think, is that that bad? It is really that bad. And you will find, in the majority of time, when people lose the reason through whatever means, they start doing horrible things. They start thinking horrible things. And that includes, if I may say, when your emotions are out of control. That's why you've been given reason, that's why you've been taught. If you are predominantly an emotional person, I'm not saying being emotional is bad, but I'm saying be careful, because you are, uh, emotionally, emotion predominates your whole behavioral pattern. That means, at any moment, if somebody says a word, or says something, or does something, or you may even see something in the TV, or read something in a newspaper, immediately there'll be that explosion of emotion within you. And what causes negative emotion? Do you remember what I mentioned in my previous lecture? Toxic thoughts. They may come from anywhere. So, uh, we need to put that into perspective.
Thank you, Dr. H. Just looking at the chat and taking on a different category, there is a question posed that says, what forms has Dasan taken over time?
What form Dasan has taken over time?
Yes.
In the past, when currency was not in existence, and even if it was, but, uh, people, if people were farmers, and they had that kind of occupation, predominantly into agricultural period of our society, into an agrarian period of our society, Dasan was given in terms of the earning they had by bartering what they had. So if people had a farm of fruit, it was fruit, if it was livestock, it was livestock, and so on. So Dasan was given in that form. And as far as the human being is concerned on earth, that has always predominated in terms of whatever the human being lived and sustained themselves with, societally speaking, that is the form in which Dasan was offered. And then down the historical path, when, uh, bartering gradually phased out, and, or maybe not completely, but even then, when currency began to be used as a medium of exchange, remember, bartering, bartering is exchange, currency is a medium of exchange. You can't eat coins, you can't eat a bank note, but it's a medium of exchange. So then currency took predominance in terms of symbolic representation of a person's earning and a person's, uh, wealth, if you like. And in order to ensure wealth was purified, actions were purified, physically, mentally, and verbally, then Dasan was submitted in the form of a currency that was itself representative of the earning of that individual. So, and that has continued till today. So it's simply the change of form, based on societal evolution and societal understanding, and it is a, the form that represents best, uh, how the human being today symbolically represents their earning and their wealth and so on.
Thank you. With about fifteen minutes remaining in our Q and A session this evening, I wanted to call upon Ali S., who has his hand raised, to please feel free to share and ask their
Dr. Hasu? Yeah, actually, I, I just raised some question yesterday, if you remember. So still I have some queries. So I feel that when you were talking about karmas, and you were talking about sanchit karmas, that if, as you said, that some of our bad karmas do not get mature here, and therefore it goes back to sanchit karma, right? So as, as far as Ismaili, uh, Ismaili doctrine is concerned, so how many times do we come to the world if our sanchit karma is full? And then every time if we come, we, uh, we, uh, we come, uh, to be born in Ismaili tarika? And secondly, that at the time when we die, so it just happens like the cycle happens, or like rebirth happens just simultaneously at the time of death? And if not, then our spiritual progress will slow down if we are not born in Ismaili tarika, because then we don't have the recognition of Imam of the time. And thirdly, as, as always, Malana Hazriyam says that after the death, the rohani is in my huzur. So do you think that, that Malana Hazriyam being the most loving father, he will just send us back every time? And, and...
Okay. So the first thing I'd like to clarify, is that based on our tarika, and based on Moulabapa's grace and mercy, are you prepared to make this life, today, here and now, your last stop? Now, I'm not asking you personally, I'm putting a question about to anyone who's interested. Do you want to make this your last stop? Let's say if your question is, yes, I want to make this my last stop. If you are prepared to say yes, and you want to make this your last stop, because remember in the beginning I raised the issue, why have you come here? And to put it simply, very simply, that you came here to complete what you did not complete. And therefore, if you're prepared to complete that, and then you leave this world with your tasks completed, then there is no coming back whatsoever. That is why in our tarika, we are told, you will not come back into this world, if you have come to complete your task. And among those tasks, let me point out, doesn't matter how you want to understand it, and how you want to frame it, and how you want to sugarcoat it. Number one, the fundamental principle of your Dasan. Secondly, your prayers. Thirdly, your amal, your deeds. And all of these, all of these is centered, guided by the holy Ferman's of the Imam, without which, you will not succeed in breaking the cycle of birth and rebirth. So, if a person can say confidently, yes, my Dasan is there, my deeds are in accordance with my Imam's Ferman, and my prayers, then you can be rest assured in following the principles of our tarika, this is your last stop. But you have to be willing to practice it. You have to be willing to put that into action. And when you do, and you are doing it every day of your life, then Moulabapa's grace and mercy, in your daily life, and when you leave this world, will be there. Now, let me leave you with some thinking. A person who does not follow the Ferman, a person who does not submit Dasan, a person who does not, is not regular in his prayers, a person who is in the tarika, born in the tarika, but to him the tarika is nothing, because God forbid that the person has either negligence, the person is reckless, the person doesn't care, the person think according to their intelligence, they are smarter, and all of that, that's all the negative thing, okay? So now, you come up with the answer. So if a person on the first instance did all the things, and he goes to Moulabapa, and that second person, also in the tarika, goes to Moulabapa, so do they both get the same reward? If that was the case, then why are we struggling right now? And the consequences for the second person is also well explained in the teachings of our Imams and in Ginnan, and even in the Hadith of the Prophet, even in the Quran. So, we have to be very careful when we say we are spiritual children of Moulabapa. And Moulabapa is compassion, and Moulabapa is love, and it's true, and Moulabapa loves us more than we can imagine. But, do we deserve that love if you do not reciprocate that love? Is that how life works? No. Why is it that we are told in our faith, love and devotion for Hazriyam is the source of our salvation? There is a, there is some concept behind that. Even in the Quran, this is mentioned. So now, I think this is quite clear, and it's simple matter of logic, nothing else. Am I following the prescription, the path? Am I following the guidance? Am I following the teachings? Am I following that knowledge, which will allow me, as a Murid of the Imam, to achieve eventual spiritual enlightenment and state to the Imam and following the path of the Imam? Or am I not following that path? It is a simple logic. An individual has been given intelligence to know, even right now, any person can ask themselves, am I, am I okay in my Dasan? Am I okay in my Dua tasbihabad? Am I okay in following the Ferman's of the Imam? I have been emphasizing to you, I have been emphasizing to you, read Moulabapa's Ferman of Diamond Jubilee. It is the most precious thing you'll be able to do in the whole of your existence. These are the real diamonds Moulabapa gave us. Make an effort, think about the path in a very logical, sensible way, and the answer is there. There won't be any issue. We do not want, we do not subscribe, and do not wish to think that the soul should be reincarnated again into this world, because you are already into this world. So the idea is this, do you want to come back into this world? Then, fair enough, you know what to do. Do you want to be free from this world, achieve liberation? He from whom we have come, to whom we will return, then you know what to do also. It's a simple enough, question of simple logic, simple understanding, you don't have to be a mathematician or a logician, but the human intelligence that Moulah is given tells you, this is the very meaning of Islam, submit yourself to the divine will, so that you can gain that peace, that peace of liberation. Mukti. Atma mukti. So that is what it is.
Thank you, Dr. Hashim. We have about six minutes left, uh, we can take another question from the chat, if you like, and then, um, we will close the evening. The question that I have, and it's, it's more of a logistical one, where can I get the Ferman books of Diamond Jubilee?
Uh, they are officially released in Jumat Kana, and, uh, I know because of circumstances, maybe they may not be available, but I would suggest you, the, you know, individuals contact the tarika board, your local tarika board, and let them, let them reply to you, uh, like how they can be made available, because it is the prerogative of the tarika board to make that available to the Jumals.
Thank you. And we had another question that had been previously submitted, um, again, uh, somewhat logistical one, um, based on Hidayat, where can I find a reliable copy of the Hadit Qudsi? And how is this Hadit different from the other Hidayats, which we often speak about?
Okay, so now, I know this question is often been raised, about where people can obtain a copy of, uh, the Hadith Qudsi. But let me say something very quickly. There are different translators of this Hadith Qudsi. Normally, the Hadith Qudsi are classified under forty different Hadiths, meaning forty different things that the Holy Prophet has said, that are classified under this category of Hadith Qudsi. So now, because different translators gives a different flavor in the translation, I was a bit reluctant to be able to say to people that, well, look, here is the book of Hadith, but you know, I have concern to make recommendations, or I believe that they may not categorically or clearly guide us into that way. But nonetheless, because I know that question is recurring, so I'm thinking, and I thought, maybe at least let me make this suggestion to you, there is a book that is translated by, uh, Lex Hixon. Lex Hixon is a scholar who converted, converted himself into Islam, but, uh, very, uh, involved into the deeper aspect of Sufism, and he translated, uh... one hundred and one teachings of the Holy Prophet, I repeat, one hundred and one teachings of the Holy Prophet, which contains the forty Hadiths. So the first section of this book has the forty Hadiths and then the remaining ones, the that takes us to hundred and one are the other spiritual teachings of the Prophet. So, if you wish to consult that text, I would say it's a nice one. And it's called a Hundred and One Diamonds, that's the name of that text. One Hundred and One Diamonds. And why am I recommending this text? Because this is a text translated from what Ibn al-Arabi collected as Hundred and One Diamonds. And Ibn al-Arabi, highly, highly revered scholar and spiritualist of the thirteenth century. And it is nice to be able to read those Hundred and One Diamonds or Sayings of the Holy Prophet. So that would be my suggestion now. Hundred and One Diamonds, collected by Ibn al-Arabi and translated by Lex Hickson, I think there is another translator too together, but this, that, this particular text is a useful one.
Thank you, Dr. Hashim. We have a member of the audience, Nasim.
Yali Madat.
Mulali Madat, Nasim Bay.
Kymcho Majama.
Kymcho Tame, Majama.
Tamad Dua, varu tamari, lekcha samli neto madamajama teydayteyche sawalit peyda deti dhatto. We are very, very happy, it is really God's grace. Acha, hu, acha Gujarati vasamadhum vaat karuchuk. It's okay if I talk in Gujarati also?
Yes, yes, it's okay.
Because I think so, I may not be able to express more betterly. Hamraji apre badi rohani, gujaridhavani, ne apre badi jiwani, ne marwani, ne badi vaat karta tha. To badi vaat apri rait chet, you have to pay the soul, you have to do Dua, everything. And there are people who can't do it. There are Ismailis, they might be not coming to Jamat Khanna or they might be not paying their Dasan, that is what is fundamental. I do believe and it is wrong. But now, let me, you tell me this. We are born in Ismaili, we have all the ceremonies in our Jamat Khanna. That Maulabapa also says in the Fardman also, je ne gat maaf kare, tere shapir maaf kare. Right? So when the person dies, whoever, X, Y, Z, we don't know what is in him, whether he was coming to Jamat Khanna or not coming to Jamat Khanna. To paach paach ajaani Jamat, kya kya badaa ka world maini Dua karave, ini maafiyu mangay, tasbiu pare. To topiis vane, ina karma ke, butu wa yu no jai, ne asalma basal nothi, dey manas Ismaili, jeno mo pedati ochet to. This was.
You know, Nasim Bay, this is a very important question, because I think this is the reality of life. But look, Maulabapa is also said to us, struggle is the meaning of life. Defeat, defeat or victory is in the hands of God. Maulabapa is also said to us, at a time of difficulty, seek the help of the living Imam. Seek the help of the Imam of the time. Apri Dua ma keyji. If an individual is into that kind of condition, they have two option. If they think, suppose, from what you say and they say, no, I can't give Dasan, I can't do my Badat, I can't do my Dua, etc., but they keep living in this world. And then when time comes, the soul lives. And this, and that person relies, as you say, other people's Dua, Dua then after them, Rohani Dua, Samad Chanta and everything else. All that is good. And it is true what you say. Gatna kaya, navji mane, tene mahadan mane pucha. That is also true. Question arises. There are rules and regulations about the practice of the faith, which is intended, which is designed for our salvation, which is designed to help us Asalma Basal. Now a person says, I am not able to do this because I can't do all the things that you say. So it means then, there are separate rules for this group of people and a separate rules from those other group of people. Is that what our faith teaches us? No. Our faith teaches us, till the day you die, you make an effort, struggle, ask Maulabapa for his help. And in asking Maulabapa for help, in your heart, in your mind, in your Tashpi, wherever you go, you say to Maulabapa, I want Chutkar of my soul. Maulabapa, how will this happen? I am not able to submit my Dasan, I am not able to perform my religious duties. And this is a fundamental part of the Asalma Basal. So Maulabapa, how is that going to happen? I have to make sure I fulfill this to the best of my ability. What I'm saying to you, that individuals must not suddenly think this is all going to be deleted and washed out and brushed under the carpet, no. Hazriyam, I'm talking about this Maulabapa, he has told us, you will be questioned whether you have fulfilled your religious, spiritual and worldly responsibility. This is the Fardman of Maulabapa. Then what will you tell him? That Maulabapa, no, I didn't fulfill, but still let me go for Asalma Basal. Then what was wrong about that person who fulfilled it? So I'm saying, let us not fall into the doldrum of thinking that we can be exempt because we can't do it. You know, I'm giving, this is an example, Nasim Bay. If a person does not have one leg and there are many in the world, do they say, no, I'm not going to walk anymore. Everybody has two leg, I can't walk, I will sit down for the rest of my life? No. Many people put prosthetics, many people are in a wheelchair, many people will walk with a walker, do they not? This shows the human will and human desire to continue functioning in the same manner, in the practice of the faith. Sometime, there are handicaps, there are challenges, like this person has one leg. Even sometime people don't have legs. What do they do? Both legs are prosthetics. They go into a wheelchair. They, they find a way to continue the locomotion. They don't say, no, I don't have legs, now let me die sitting down here. It doesn't happen that way. So we have to be, we have to be encouraging to people and give them the courage positively to say that, look, if you are not able to give Dasan, there may be a reason, but it means, seek help. Help means first of all spiritually. And if you're honest and sincere, look what our Dua says. Ina kalla kuleshen kadir, yaliya mahmad ya mahmad yali. It says, Mola, you have power over all thing. Mola, you are giving Roji to everyone. You will not give me? You will not open my path for Roji so I can do my duty of Dasan? Now, is this not a way? But the will must be there, desire must be there, the sincerity, honesty must be there. And if a person does that, you can be rest assured, based on the teachings of our Tarika, help comes. It's a matter of conviction. Ke mavi roji chet, mene mola diye chet. Whatever happens to me, based on my effort. And remember what Maulabapa has said, success is not due to you. Success is due to Allah's will. Fardman ma chet. To Pachi, this kind of guidance Maulabapa is giving, we must put in our life and make an effort. You know, I give you a simple example if I may. I know we have passed our ten o'clock mark, but this is so very important. A man came to Hazrat Ali, Sallallahu Alaihi Wasallam. And he went to Hazrat Ali and he said, Mola, I am so unfortunate, I am so unlucky that I cannot even feed my children and my family and sometime we get one meal after three days. Mola, please give me Roji. Right? We are at same point. So Mola says, I've given you the key of your Roji. The problem with you is, Mola says, I'm using my words. The problem with you is, Mola says, I've given you the key, but instead of opening the door, you have sat down thinking it will just come. No, Maulabapa said, no, Mola Ali said, go and open the door, I, because you know, let me tell you, and you know this thing, Nasim Bay. In our Dharam, we believe, roji devavado, mola si vai bijo koinati. It is him. Whether it is one piece of bread or whether you can eat a whole chicken, it is a bakshish and Barakat of Maulabapa into our life. So Mola Ali tells this man, I've given you the key. I have not kept you without any Roji. And this man started thinking. Then he asked, Mola, how do I open the door? Mola told him, tomorrow, go, go and look for a job. And he started thinking in his mind. He was, he was you know, he was momin. So he did not argue, but in his mind, he was thinking, I've been seeking for a job many places, but nobody is giving me, that's why I'm in this situation. Mola told him again, go tomorrow and find the job. So what happened? Next day, early morning, he woke up and started going in different places and eventually somebody gave him the job. And when he started working that day, now in those days, people were paid at the end of the day, something like that. So he was paid and nicely paid. He was able to buy food from the market, take it home. And when he was on his way home, he saw Mola Mortaz Ali. He went to Mola Ali, Maulabapa, shukr Mola, shukr Alhamdulillah Mola. But then he said to Mola, one thing, said, Mola, I did not understand when you say key and open the door. And then Maulabapa explained to him, Mola Ali explained to him, Mola Ali said, when I said I gave you the key, it means I gave you the akal to go out there and seek, seek and make your effort, do your menat. Then the door opens, then I will give you the Roji. He said, Mola, this is exactly what I did. So then Mola said, then he said, Mola, the Roji I got today is from you, shukr Mola. This is what our faith expects of us. Go out there, make your effort, use your intelligence, use your prayers, make Maulabapa your partner and said to Mola, Mola, you know what? I will enjoy the world, but I also want to be Fardman Badadi and Dasandi. Please Maulabapa, give me enough so that I can do that. You think Mola will not give you? Are you honest? Are you sincere? Are you Fardman Badadi? Is this coming from your heart? Molato sat, jamine sat, asman no malik chet. Ek mominne dasan ni je ini umed wey, nati pori kadi sakta? You know, Nasim Bay, we have to understand. I hope, I hope I'm making sense to you and please, don't hesitate to tell me if there is a gap in my thinking or if I say is not fitting correctly into what you, your thought should be. Please, don't hesitate, I'm, I'm open.
I will, I will end on that note. Thank you, Nasim Bay, for sharing that question. It was a wonderful way to end the session this evening. Thank you, Dr. Hashim, for a very informative session. And though we could not cover all of the questions, we promised the audience that the questions in the chat will not be discarded, but rather saved for a future Q and A session. And on behalf of our admin team, I would like to extend our appreciation to the audience members for sharing their evening with us and participating in our Q and A session. This would not be possible without you and we sincerely thank you. Lastly, on behalf of the almost three hundred plus participants who joined us tonight, Dr. Hashim, we would like to sincerely thank you for giving so selflessly of your time, week after week, to share your incredible knowledge with us. We pray that Mola bless you for this wonderful Seba and keep you in his utmost care. Amin. If I may ask you now to please say a few words to officially close tonight's session and again, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you first of all, Shiroz, for hosting this evening's session. Thank you for helping in bringing those questions in a way that you did. Thank you, Shahrukh, thank you, Nusri, thank you all the other co-hosts for your love and dedication for the audience that comes and for what you are doing, without which I would not be able to render my part of service. And I always say that to everyone who participated or not and to all our hosts and co-hosts, Mola bless you with Barakat. Maulabapa bless you with strength in your Dasan. Maulabapa increase day by day your Imaan. Maulabapa makes strong your Imaan, day by day, strength by strength. May Maulabapa remove all calamities and difficulties, obstacles, challenges that people may be facing in their Dasan, in their Dua, in their Ibadah. May Maulabapa's mercy and grace come to the rescue of our spiritual brothers and sisters who are facing those challenges. May they also, with Maulabapa's mercy, grace, Maulabapa's love and compassion, may they also become Dasandi, Ibadati and may they fulfill their religious duties as expected in our Tarika. May Maulabapa bless us with Hakikati Samajh. May Maulabapa bless everyone, everyone with Barakat. Maulabapa accept your Tashpi. Mola's hand be upon you all to guide you, protect you, to keep you safe. Maulabapa keep you in his nur. Maulabapa increase your knowledge, step by step, day by day, week after week, month after month. May that knowledge bring you enlightenment and understanding of our Tarika and may Maulabapa bless you with Zahiri, Pathini, Dida. Amin, amin, amin. Mola bless you all, have a pleasant evening or pleasant morning, wherever you are. And Insha Allah, we will reconnect next week. Thank you again, everyone. Mola bless you. Yali Madat.